Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00. We'll begin the Board of Selectmen meeting. I have seven. It is seven. I guess we'll start. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, September 9. All rise, please, as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We'll begin tonight with public audience if there's anyone who'd like to address the Board. Yes, we'll start with Joe.
From now until November elections, we, the people, should review the accomplishments of our elected officials. If we could give them a report card, I would give them a failing grade. We have been lied to and cajoled into thinking that our elected officials are spending our money wisely. However, the budgets and rhetoric are geared to get them reelected. It appears that this is the last election cycle for First Electman Mary Glassman. The new charter has delegated the First Electman's position to a ceremonial position and all authority delegated to his pseudo-town manager. When Mary Glassman ran against Tom Vincent, she stated she was in favor of a town manager. However, with a six-figure salary for a ceremonial position and five weeks of paid vacation, it was too good to give up. Now that the pseudo-town manager, Tom Cook, has expressed a review of the First Electman's position and reduction of the salary to a ceremonial position, it is time to decide on having a professional town manager for Simsbury. Many consultants have stated that it is time for Simsbury to have professional management. Cook stated that he would hire a consultant to review the salaries and duties in the Selectman's office to reflect the new charter requirements and salaries for the staff. This will be implemented after this election cycle. Cook should have the consultant review having a town manager as the executive officer of Simsbury, as do the surrounding towns. It is time for Simsbury to have professional management. At present time, our highest taxpayer, the Hartford, has a sign-out for sale of the property. The big Y has not placed the shovel on the property and is still in talks with the town about the road easement, taking four years through the approval process. No shovel, no taxes. We have spent money on charrettes, and we continue to have lowered property values and a reduction in our grant list. Why has the town allocated $30,000 for a study on the Hartford land and building when the responsibility in sale is determined by the Hartford shareholders? Why have the taxpayers paid $50,000 for Main Street Partnership, a nonprofit organization? We are told that their budgets have not increased, but $400,000 was taken from reserves for the pension fund. This was off-budget, as is many other revenues, taken from reserves. The golf course is not sustaining, self-sustaining, and taxpayers are paying for the deficit and will continue to do so in the future. Eno Farms' affordable housing is not affordable, and there have been allegations of fraud, misappropriation of funds, and embezzlement. The community farm under the management of the elite at the Walker School has a mission inconsistent with the Eno Trust, and this is just the beginning. The town dump managed by Paines is part of the Eno Trust for the poor, and the fees keep increasing year after year, all this under the watchful eye of Nancy Hossi and the Board of Selectmen. The town leased five acres of land on the Meadowwood Triangle to Farmer Anthony for $300 a year, and at the present time is a mismanaged manure dumping ground. Paines has dumped manure from Folly Farm and Ethel Walker School on the property. According to Joseph Whitman from the State DEP, the U.S. Agricultural Department requires a nutrient management plan for the stockpiling of manure on the property, and the manure should be transferred to the back of the property. According to town records, both Ethel Walker and Folly Farm sent identical letters attesting to the identical contents of the manure, and the signatures were from the same pens. These letters were dated June 15, 2013, and stamped "Received by the Town," August 9, 2013. They stated, and I quote, "to whom it may concern regarding the manure from Folly Farm." The other letter inserts Ethel Walker, which is delivered to Anthony's farm. It contains no synthetic inputs such as odor-reducing or fertility-stabilizing additives," end quote. One letter assigned Assistant Farm Manager Melissa Berg, and the other was signed C. Trappell, Folly Farm Stable LLC. I would like to have an explanation as to the veracity of these letters. There are additional piles of manure dumped by the side of the road on Bondor Hills away from Farmer Anthony's farm. This land belongs to the taxpayers, and the town should provide oversight to all town properties. According to town records, Hot Meadow Country Club and Gerard Brothers are delinquent in paying their taxes. Today I called the tax office for information, and the recording stated that the office was closed Monday, September 9. How can First Electman Mary Glassman run on a platform of open government when we have a shutdown in the tax office? Recently, I called the Finance Department and asked to review the town attorney file. I was told that it was made available to me when I arrived that day. When I arrived, I was confronted with the Finance Director and denied access to the file and was verbally abused. I would suggest that the Finance Director receive anger management training when dealing with the public. Eventually, I was given the file and reviewed the contents. The file was incomplete, ending in April. There was also a payment of $25,746.39 in January, above the $8,000 monthly fee. Who is monitoring the file? First Electman Mary Glassman prides herself with transparent government. However, the agenda emails distributed for town meetings are inconsistent in distribution. The links on the town website do not deliver the accurate materials. The website is difficult to navigate, and there are many omissions. As of now, the website is not transparent and is in need of many upgrades. How can First Electman Mary Glassman advertise Town Hall office hours as open on Monday from 8:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. when all offices except the First Electman's office? With all offices open except the First Electman's office, is that open government? While driving on the road to Dorset Crossing, I noticed the new substation that was erected on town land. As you see in this picture, it is a huge transmission station. There has been much discussion and scientific evidence that these substations emit large quantities of stray electricity and create a dangerous electromagnetic field and could cause bodily harm. When the town approved the Dorset Crossing development, was the developer aware that the substation was in close proximity to this development? Has the town been given a report from Northeast Utilities on the amount of stray electricity they anticipate will be emitted from the substation and high electric wires on the poles? I would like to report that I received confirmation on my Freedom of Information complaint alleging that Tom Cook, First Electman Mary Glassman's administrative assistant, entered into an executive session of the Eno Farms Subcommittee meeting in violation of the Freedom of Information Act. I also questioned how Shaun Askam can participate in an executive session through unsecured phone conversations since she was not present at the meeting. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury.com forum and Simsbury Patch for your review. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
And you can have all this stuff.
Thank you. Robert Kalischman, Simsbury. Thank you for allowing me to...
Can you say your name again?
Robert Kalischman. Simsbury. Thank you for allowing me to... ...and First Electman. Madam First Electman, I'd like to start with, last Wednesday, we had a Democratic dog-and-pony show. The governor came to Simsbury and appeared at Taltmeadow Farm for terrorism in regards to, I assume, to the ice cream and dairy that's presumed to be there. And then after I inquired, I found out, and I asked about what happened to the million dollars we gave the Taltmeadow family? What happened to it? And I was told that the cows on the dairy farm had been sold off, and he's stopping the dairy operation, and he has all those pastures and everything. So that remains to be seen what happens there and what the agreement is. And why are we going into these agreements with the land trust? And they go out, and everybody comes before us and tells us how great it is. And then the next thing we find out, excuse me, the next thing we find out is that it's not working. The fellow packs his suit, guys, and he goes. And the governor comes to town to tell everybody how great it is, and doesn't our illustrious state representative, doesn't he know that there's two ice cream companies in Simsbury? We have Jay Foster right here on Hot Meadow, and we have Taltmeadow. Why is there favoritism in the Democratic Selectmen or Democratic... Well, the Selectman was there too, so she approved of it. And here it comes. They come to town, the governor's coming to town. What did he do? And the next thing, we go off, and everybody's saying, "Fine." And then tonight, I come in, and I hear, "There's a contract that you're going to be asked to approve today for five years guaranteeing the golf pro out at the golf course a five-year contract." One year, we gave him, he has all the... The revenue comes from all the carts. We pay for the carts, he gets the revenue. He has that, that perk. We cut our police department, we cut our police department's contract, right? The Simsbury's finest, we cut them, we cut them down, we took away their medical, we did everything, we called that a great contract, right? You save money. And now, we're going to guarantee the golf pro five-year contract, right? Why can't he do like everybody else does? If you're not... If Jerry decides that you're not doing the job, you're out. And you go get a job. And if Jerry's benevolent, he says, "Look, I'm going to give you three months' notice to go. Otherwise, you're out, just like everybody else." I'm certain if we have a policeman and they decide to get rid of him, he's out, just like that policeman that was hit in the car down in front of the high school, and he went on the disabled list, and they felt sorry for him, so they let him work for maybe two months. And then when he was told he had to go back into the cruiser, to the squad car, he said he couldn't do it. Boom, he had to go. I didn't... There wasn't one person outside of the chief that, on that police commission, that stood up and said, "Look, we have to look out for our own. He was wounded, and we're going to take care of him." Boom, you let him go. And now you want to give an attaboy, five-year golf contract. It's not... You're not being frugal. You're telling us you are, but you're not. And then let's go to the other fiasco we had in the 5th Democratic District for Congress. Mr. Donovan's candidacy, all of them, all of them, all went to prison. Nestes, over two and a half years. Benjamin Hogan, over two years. Robert, he's the one that took the big hit. Braddock, the innocent guy from North Carolina, he came, he was given the big hit. He goes for two and a half years, I think it's two and a half years, to four years plus probation. Then you have Daniel Montero. Hi, doggy. You have George Todaro. All eight people were charged, all eight people were indicted, all eight were found guilty, all Democratic Dominies. Still haven't cleaned up your house. Now, next thing, the election started off...
You could summarize, Mr. Kalischman.
I'm going to summarize.
Spend five minutes.
Let me summarize with a good subject. The election started, was kicked off. How can we ask people to vote for change? When all through the year, I sat here and we witnessed whatever this chair or the First Electwoman proposed, everybody went along with it. The Republicans supported you, the Democrats supported you. So what change are they going to bring? They haven't changed anything. And now they're asking town leaderships once, "So what are they going to change? Why vote for the other party when you're not going to get any change?" Think about it. They're not going to change anything. Just going to be a face. Not going to change policy. Thank you for your allotted time.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else? Yes.
Sue Bednarzak, 119 East Sweettuck Street. I am here to talk about land use Big Shaw. Sue Bednarzak, B-E-D-N-A-R-C-Y-K.
Thank you. We have a new clerk, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, East Sweettuck Street.
Thank you.
First thing I wanted to do, actually, though, is talk about Mim Nichols, who has given her second donation to the town. And I just wanted to talk about her because she lived down the street from me. And she was a valued resident for many, many years, contributed a lot to the town, was an avid golfer, loved to volunteer, and did a whole bunch of information. She just did a lot of, just a lot of, like, informing people. She was a nurse, and she really loved this town. And she was spending her final years at McLean, and she was in the assisted living, and we took her out to lunch, and she was just a really great lady. And the fact that her estate is going to provide for more things in Simsbury is great. She gave me my first set of golf clubs because she was an avid golf club. Of course, she was shorter than I was, so I was like... But she, you know, she was just an incredible lady. The only time she ticked me off is when I got a speeding ticket when I was, like, I don't know, 17, and she called my parents to say, "Sue just got a speeding ticket in front of our house." So, other than that, I just want people to realize, like, what a great person, you know, she was. So, I don't know how many people met her. Planning. There was an article in the paper about the new town planner of Farmington. But the thing that struck me most was the quote from Jeff Olendorf, who was a phenomenal town planner. He was right up there with, just amazing. When I was on planning, we went to a couple of things that he had, you know, sponsored. And this is the line that I really thought was impressive. "When Olendorf publicized his retirement in May, he offered some advice for his replacement. 'You just want to make yourself available to the highest degree as possible to the public and the commissions you serve and the town manager,' Olendorf told the Valley Press. 'If you treat the public well and you do a diligent job in the office, everything should go well.'" So, we have the charrette going on, which I'm totally... I love it because it's a planning process, and we don't usually do planning in this town as much. We have a town planner who lives far away, so he tends to schedule things during the day. And so, what I noted most is that I went to the meeting on Friday, which was, let's see, like, four hours. I went to the meeting for the community, there were community meetings over the weekend. And then there was another stakeholder meeting for more developers, which was two hours. And then I participated in the homeowner's stakeholders' meeting today. That was an hour. So, I guess, if anything, I'd like to take the advice that Olendorf gave and say that we ought to start embracing that thought because he's in Farmington. Yes, they have highway access, but they had a lot of success stories. And Jeff was the type of planner that we need here. They, in fact, hired a guy from Ellington, which is very closely related to what we have. We hired a guy whose town paid him to leave. So, I understand that some people weren't here when he got hired and, you know, but the reality of the situation is, it's just kind of sad to me that, you know, I think that this is going to be a good, a really good charrette. But my concern about it is, and I asked the gentleman who's doing it, "What happens when you leave?" Because when you leave, we have what we have, but it's not going to be guaranteed to be followed through on. And so, I just want to make sure, he seems to be trying to do a good job. He's working, you know, trying to work with everybody. But I just have a fear that we're going to end up possibly with something we don't want if Hiram doesn't mind the store. And so, you know, as an example, when I went to the developers' meeting on Friday, TJ Donahue was the first one to stand up and say, "Well, you know, that Hartford should have been built right next to the road." And we all know that TJ's the lawyer for Greenberg down the street, so unless we have some type of charrette for that. And Scott, the gentleman who's doing the charrette, said, you know, because he was challenged about the charrette from some of the people who had come to the meeting, whether or not they'd make more money. And if they followed what Scott was going to do, he said that he's had people make, like, three times the money they thought they were going to make. So, I really hope that we take this planning process and carry it through to zoning and not just do something, you know, pave-over without regard to planning or anything like that. So, and I think we ought to take this, Jeff Olendorf's words, and perhaps even hire him as a consultant, maybe, and see how the other half lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for participating in the meeting. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all. We'll move to presentations. Our first proclamation is Constitution Week. Like, Selectmen, ask them to read that, if you don't mind.
The Town of Simsbury proclamation. Whereas September 17, 2013, Constitution Day marks the 226th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America. And whereas we, the people, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America to secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves, our posterity. And whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions, principles, and meaning of the Constitution so they can support, preserve, and defend it against encroachment. And whereas the President and the Congress of the United States have designated September 15 through the 21st as Constitution Week. And whereas Constitution Week provides the opportunity for all Americans to learn about and to reflect upon the rights and privileges of citizenship and its responsibilities. And whereas the people of the Town of Simsbury do enjoy the blessings of liberty, the guarantees of the Bill of Rights, equal protection of the law under the Constitution, and the freedoms derived from it. Now, therefore, let it be known, I, Mary A. Glassman, Selectman, excuse me, First Electman of the Town of Simsbury, do hereby proclaim September 15 through the 21st, 2013, as Constitution Week, and invite every citizen and institution to join in national commemoration. It witness thereto, I have placed my seal on the Great Seal of the Town of Simsbury, dated the 9th day of September, 2013.
Thank you very much. And we have several proclamations tonight. I'll ask Selectman Wertheimer to read our next proclamation.
Leukemia, Lymphoma, and Myeloma Awareness Month. Whereas blood cancers currently afflict more than 1,025,33 Americans with an estimated 140,310 new cases diagnosed each year. And whereas leukemia, lymphoma, and myeloma will kill an estimated 53,010 people in the United States this year. And whereas the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, through voluntary contributions, is dedicated to finding cures for these diseases through research efforts and the support for those that suffer from them. And whereas the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society maintains an office in Wilton and Meriden to support patients with these diseases and their family members in the state of Connecticut. And whereas the state of Connecticut is similarly committed to the eradication of these diseases and supports the treatment of its citizens that suffer from them. And whereas the state of Connecticut encourages private efforts to enhance research funding and education programs that address these diseases. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Simsbury joins with the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society in designating the month of September 2013 as Leukemia, Lymphoma, and Myeloma Awareness Month to enhance the understanding of blood-related cancers and to encourage participation in voluntary activities to support education programs and the funding of research programs to find a cure for them.
Thank you very much. And we thank our residents for bringing these proclamation requests forward so we could highlight some of the concerns of our community. The next proclamation comes from both the Social Service Department and AT&amp;T. And I'll ask Deputy First Selectman Lisa Havner to read that one.
This is a proclamation about not texting while driving, and this is done by AT&amp;T, but it supports the efforts of our town. This was the old "Don't text and drive," and this is the new one we're unveiling, which says "Park the phone." So we encourage folks to not text and drive. We have observed, just anecdotally, that it's often grownups who text and drive, so that goes to not just our teens, but to our grownups. And these are just some of the things they've given "My car is a no-phone zone" that we give away to sort of emphasize that message. Whereas texting has become the way many people communicate today, which means some people are doing it at the worst possible time, while driving. And whereas texting while driving is involved in over 100,000 motor vehicle crashes each year, often causing injuries and deaths. And whereas those who text while driving are 23 times more likely to be involved in some type of safety-critical event as compared to those drivers who don't text while they drive. And whereas in 2009, AT&amp;T launched the public awareness campaign, "It Can Wait," to educate the public about the dangers of texting while driving by encouraging consumers to take the personal pledge not to text while driving. And be it further proclaimed that members of the Board of Selectmen have taken the personal pledge to not text and drive, support efforts to raise public awareness about the dangers of texting while driving, and encourage others to take the pledge not to text and drive. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Town of Simsbury designates September 19, 2013, as No Texting While Driving Day, to focus attention on the dangers of texting while driving.
Mary A. Glassman, First Electman. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. And those props are available through the Social Service Department. If anyone would like some free help in promoting the no-texting while driving. So thank you all for your excellent reading. We'll move right to First Selectmen's report. I do want to highlight something that was raised in public audience, and that is that we are currently in the middle of the charrette for the Hartford property. It's currently underway. It began last Friday with several hours of site visits and stakeholder interviews, and we will conclude tomorrow night, Tuesday night, with a community presentation conducted at the Hartford property, beginning at 6:30 and running till 8:00. The process included, so far, two public meetings on Saturday to make sure that our consultant Gateway Planning, who is conducting the process, the Hartford, and the town's technical staff have input from Simsbury residents and businesses to help frame the future of the site. As we meet tonight, Gateway Planning is conducting another open house at the Hartford, and I strongly urge residents who are interested in this important project for the future of our town to attend the presentation tomorrow night. We have a lot of information about the charrette process on the town's website, and there's also a way for individuals to post comments. The link is on the front page of the website at www.simsbury-ce.gov. With the data that's collected from the visit, Gateway Planning will continue to work with staff and Hartford Land Use Study Committee to put together the recommendations for co-development as we work to make sure that we're doing everything possible to ensure a positive outcome for the town. I'd like to particularly thank the Hartford for their part in not only funding the process, for their funding of the process, but for participating in it as well. The Hartford and CB Richard Ellis, which is the broker retained by the Hartford for marketing and sale of the property, have provided valuable insight and information to the process. I'd also like to thank the committee members and the town staff for this intensive and comprehensive process. I am looking forward, as well as I know the Board of Selectmen is, to receiving Gateway Planning's recommendations from the charrette. Do want to announce some upcoming events. We just concluded with Simsbury September Fest, and the weather was great, and folks were out. So thank the committee for all their hard work, and the Chamber Commerce for their home improvement show. We have a couple of exciting events, and there's always something to do, so get your calendars ready. The Simsbury Women's Club will host its 44th Annual Arts and Crafts Festival on Saturday, September 14, and Sunday, September 15. This event will feature more than 100 artists and craftsmen. In addition to the exhibits, there's also some food and a bake sale. So it will be held on Iron Horse Boulevard from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And we thank the Simsbury Women's Club for doing an incredible job with the festival and for the contributions go to charity as a result. The Grange Fair will also be held on September 17 from 10:00 to 3:00. They'll have an agricultural fair at the Grange Hall on 236 Farms Village Road. It's free and open to the public and has a number of bake sales and activities. There's also the Simsbury Fly-In, so a busy weekend. That will run from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. On Sunday, September 15, it will include about 650 airplanes and automobiles. They are expecting more than 10,000 people to come and view the event. There'll also be vendors, breakfast and lunch, flying demonstrations, seminars on aviation topics will be presented. I'd like to thank the Simsbury Flying Club, the Experimental Aircraft Association, the Simsbury Chapter, and the Porter Chester Institute for putting the event together. And in three weeks from now, on Sunday, September 29, Simsbury will be home again to the Fidelco Guide Dog- Fidelco Guide Dog Foundation's Share the Vision Fundraising Dog Walk and Family Day. The event is on Sunday, September 29th. It's the 32nd Annual Walk in Connecticut, and it's the second year it's here in our own town of Simsbury. The event takes place from 10:00 to 3:00 with a walk kickoff ceremony starting at 10:45, which is a wonderful event. We will be at the Performing Arts Center, will feature live music by Little House Band, and it will provide an important service. The Fidelco Guide Dog provides an important service to men and women who cannot see, and they are given German Shepherd guide dogs. Each dog costs about $45,000 to raise and train, and clients receive these guide dogs at no cost. We've been a great partner with Fidelco. We're very fortunate to have them back in our town and ask everyone to come out and support Fidelco. And I see we have a representative from Fidelco here, and Bryn is here and looks very comfortable sleeping on the floor there. And Kathy Cook is here, so thank you for bringing Bryn, and we'll look forward to seeing you on the walk.
Mary, I think you said the 17th.
The 14th. Thank you.
For the Grange is the 14th.
The 14th. Everything's the same weekend.
Right.
So thank you. Just to clarify. Okay. We'll move right to action items. Our first action item is approving of the tax refunds. We have a total from our tax collector, recommendations of $10,341.76. These are refunds that have been reviewed and approved by the tax collector. Any questions?
Move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Shannon.
I know we got to go slow today.
We'll be a little more patient when we move through the agenda to make sure that our minutes reflect our action. The next item is acceptance of the PAC financials. I asked this to be placed on the agenda. We were to receive a report. I believe there is some handouts, but in deference to Bob Hensley, who chairs the PAC, he had asked, because of a death in the family of his mom, and our condolences to Bob, that this item be tabled so he can have time to present the financials at our next meeting. So if the board has no objections, I'd ask for a motion to table.
Move.
Second. Moved by Selectman Wertheimer, seconded by Selectman Hossi. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the courtesy. The next item is to approve renewing the personal service agreement with the golf professional, John Verentia, for a period of five years, beginning February 1. I thought it said Valentine's Day there for a minute. February 1, 2014. John is here. Welcome, John, and thank you for being here, and thank you for your hard work. And also Jerry Tonner is here to explain the contract. The contract has been reviewed and was unanimously approved by the Culture Parks and Rec Commission. So it comes to us after review and discussions, and comes to us with recommendation from Jerry. So Jerry, if you want to highlight anything, and then I'll ask the board if they have any questions, and then give John an opportunity. Say hello.
Is outlining a submission. The contract, the content of the contract is very similar to the contract that's been in place, contracts, actually. John has been our head professional since 1998, and in many, most of the conditions actually have continued, you know, through each contract. We've been very fortunate to have John with us. He's been, you know, certainly the, our key guy, and many times the first person that people meet when they go to the course, and we really couldn't ask for, you know, for anyone better to represent us and represent the town. And, you know, I talk repeatedly here about how we're always trying to get new people, you know, and new play at the golf course. And, you know, John is certainly a guy who has, you know, heeded that call, and he's certainly just his, you know, his personality and the job that he and his staff do really lend itself to when people come up, they want to come back. And so we're very, very fortunate, you know, to have him, and I hope, you know, this isn't his last contract. But many, most of the conditions are the same. We're increasing the term from four years to five years. About four years ago, we started a fee that he pays to reflect utility use at the facility. It involved doing a meter reading every month. We've somewhat refined that to a fixed amount that we feel is, you know, reflects the amount of the utilities that is used in the pro shop operation. John and his staff will offer free 15-minute lessons early in the year, April through June, to interested golfers. Similar to what he's done, he's also provided supervised practice free of charge. So the, and the idea is to get people up there and get them practicing, getting them comfortable. A lot of time, you know, he or his staff can, you know, can walk by, help them out, give people, you know, some tips, and it's gone a long way, I think, and again, making people comfortable being at the farms. Golf cart lease, which runs co-terminously with this agreement, will also increase from four years to five years. The total compensation for the lease of the golf cart fleet, which hasn't gone up since the inception of the first contract, will increase from $43,890 to $46,800. And that real, just reflects the amount of property tax that is paid to the town on those carts. And again, the amount of compensation has not changed since the original contract in 1998. These changes and the entire contract was reviewed by the Park and Recreation Commission at their July 25th meeting. It was endorsed at that time unanimously. The contract was again reviewed by Town Attorney Robert DiCrescenzo, was approved as to form for submission of the board and for execution by the First Selectman. I'd be glad to answer any questions, or have John answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jerry. Any questions from the board? John?
Just like to point out quickly, because I think it was raised before this, Jerry, I'm wrong. This contract has a termination clause.
It absolutely does.
Not that we would assume that that would happen, but it gives the town an out that if the services aren't being met, we give 60 days notice and the contract would be terminated.
That's correct.
Welcome, John. Do you have any, what have you noticed in the 15 years, the trends in golfing since you've been with the town? Any?
You know, golf hit a high 10 years ago, and people were coming up to our door without having to go out there and get them. Now it's the other way. Now we got to get them and keep them here. And we have the facility to do it, and, you know, I think we're on the right track. I think everything is starting to go up now, so hopefully it stays that way.
Great. Other questions? Thank you for your service with free lessons.
Maybe, maybe some of us will learn how to play golf sometime, maybe.
I could definitely use a lesson.
But we encourage our residents to come up. I think that's great. I think the 15-minute lessons is a good way for people who may be afraid to go up there, you know, just to get people up there and swinging a ball and finding out whether they like it or not. So that's great, especially for young kids to learn to play. So thank you for extending that as well. Do I have a motion to approve the contract?
You do. I move that we approve the contract as presented and unanimously approved by the Culture Parks and Rec Commission.
Mr. Askem moved it. Mrs. Hevner seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations. Mrs. Hevner.
And Jerry, before you go too far, our next item is to approve a one-year contract with FAVAR, Farmington Valley Arc, FAVAR, to provide services and programming to Simsbury residents with special needs and support services to the department and adapting programs for individuals with special needs. We've had a great relationship with FAVAR. We've really enjoyed that relationship, and they've provided a great service to us. And I didn't know if you wanted to add anything, Jerry?
No, Mary, just what you said. We've had a great working relationship with them. You know, the times when we needed, you know, their direction, their expertise, they've been very, very responsive. We do rely on them. They come in and do our preseason staff training with our playground and camp staff. Have always been, you know, just do a wonderful job. That training is part of this contract, is provided as part of this contract. And they also, you know, as many of you were, run a number of programs for Simsbury residents. They give us a report as a requirement of the contract every year. We get a report on the numbers of Simsbury residents that are involved in the programs. I can provide that to you if you'd like, but I did include the numbers of residents that are involved. This line, this is an item that's included in the budget every year. It's been approved through the last budget process, and yeah, I would, you know, hope that we continue this relationship. I think it's been a very, very good one for the town, and we're very, very happy to be working with them.
Great. Any questions?
Shannon? I'd just like to make a comment. Jerry, thank you for bringing this here tonight. I think FAVAR is an outstanding organization, having known them firsthand, and I think that the training that they do and the work that they do is so key to making our community what it is and to being as inclusive as possible. So I thank you for bringing it here.
That's my pleasure.
We have really found them to be very helpful in the past when parents have asked for accommodations, and they, FAVAR has been right there to offer suggestions and provide guidance as to how we can accommodate and help a family that's wrestling with some issues. So it's been very helpful.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make the motion to approve the contract.
It's made by Shannon. Second? Second by Nancy.
By Nancy.
Yes. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you, Jerry. Next item is to approve a request by the Board of Finance to have Bloom Shapiro, our accounting and audit firm, review cash receipt and disbursement processes for Simsbury Farms, Performing Arts Center, and building permits. I think, just for some background, this is just something that the accounting firm suggested that we do. It's something that the Board of Finance suggested. It's not as a result of any concerns the town has, it's just good business practice that we take a look, wherever there's cash exchanging hands, take a look at some of our reviews and procedures. So I would suggest that we support the additional cost of $14,900 to cover the review. Any questions? Lisa, and then Sean.
This is, I think it grew out of, Nick Mason mentioned that the Board of Finance has been looking at risk management and ways to make sure that we have the checks and balances in place to ensure that we're providing the best possible services to our residents, and that grew out of that. And I think this is a good suggestion, and I am glad that we are doing this. I did have a question. What percent of our, the revenue we take in is cash?
It's quite variable.
Yeah.
For example, situations, there's a great deal of cash up at the farms for the various programming there for an event like September Fest. A great deal of cash is collected there and at the concerts, and I think we all agree that, I mean, the numbers can go up to $30,000, and they can be a lot smaller than that as well.
But in terms of an $18 million budget, it's still a small amount.
It's a very small percentage of the total budget. But, you know, the key is no one here wants $200 to go missing. It's very, very important. And I think, I know, for example, that the Performing Arts Center has done, has worked very hard to make sure that their processes for these, for the concerts and for September Fest are carefully managed. But it really does make sense to have our auditor come in and review the procedures and make sure that we get the benefit of their best practices.
And I think with the advent of online payments through the tax collection, online increases, that does twofold. It minimizes the amount of cash changing hands, and it also gets the cash, the deposits into our bank accounts quicker. So we count those types of things. And so through a review, and if we can uncover any checks and balances or procedures that could expedite the collections and also minimize the risk, we'd like to incorporate that.
From an internal, honest standpoint, what folks may ask, why aren't the auditors already looking at this? These items don't reach materiality. Materiality is typically a quarter million dollars, a half a million dollars for municipal audit, you know, because we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars, which is the general law of us, right? Materiality of taxpayers. But from an audit standpoint, is looked upon differently. So this is, this is an important step, as you articulated, in terms of reviewing our internal control function, strengthening the overall finance controls that we have in place, and obviously making sure that, I think there's communication in the building permit and process as well, which I think is another item that they're looking for here. And I can personally attest that I think there are great controls at the Performing Arts Center. As I was part of them this weekend, there's double counting. You know, folks all witness it, that everything goes into a locked container. So there's a lot of things that the town is already doing very well, and hopefully this will affirm those controls and then, and again, point us in the direction of what we may need to look at in the future. So I, I'm glad that we're doing this.
Great. Would anyone like to make a motion? Questions?
Presumably, since the Board of Finance is requesting this, they're realizing that it's going to cost money.
Yes.
They do. They need our approval.
I appreciate it.
Not within the scope, the Board of Finance actually hires the auditors, so it wasn't within the scope of what they did. So they'll have to look within their budget for these funds.
Those are my question slash comment, which is, is this something that we would want to plan for to do on a semi-regular basis and budget for something like this?
I think that the results, I think we'll look at the results, and once the results are available, then we can decide during the budget process whether to incorporate funding.
If I could just maybe, because we need to, I would hate to see this have to take another two meetings for everybody, we need to approve the money tonight as well.
Yes, we do.
So otherwise, we'll go back to them.
No, no, that was not our intention. Our intention was to approve, the motion should be to approve the scope of services and to authorize the funds, and to ask the Finance Director to identify where those funds would come from.
Tell me that motion.
I said it publicly, I'll say it again. The funds are $14,900.
Do you think the Board of Finance, planning to take this out of the general?
Yes. But if that should change, I'd ask that the motion be to direct the Board of Finance, the Finance Director to identify the funds, and then have the Board of Finance authorize. This way, we wouldn't have to come back and, it gives them a little more, if the board's comfortable with it, it'll give them a little more flexibility if there should be surplus funds or something available. So we're authorizing the additional action and authorizing the funds under this motion. Everybody's, yes. Any additional questions? Would anyone like to make a motion? That as a motion? Maura is making that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Nancy's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is to accept an additional donation, the amount of $31,472.24, from the estate of Miriam Nichols. This is, I believe, one of the largest donations we've received. Mrs. Nichols gave us a $31,000, just make sure I have that, a $55,000 donation. We accepted that on March 11th, 2013. This is an additional $31,472.24. This is an extraordinary donation from an extraordinary woman. It'll go a very long way to providing out-of-town medical dialyrid funds and assistance to our residents. Very generous. Mrs. Nichols loved the town, she loved the people in this town, and there will be a lot of people benefiting as a result of her generous donation. So I'd ask that the board accept with extreme gratefulness that donation. We have, we have sent a thank you note on behalf of the board for the first donation. We weren't able to get the names or addresses of the family. We're going to try again, because the estate attorney would not release that information. It's confidential. So we, we will communicate again, the gratefulness of the board, and hopefully, if we can get any family members, we'll try that again. So if I could have a motion to accept the donation.
I will make that motion to accept the donation. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Lisa. The next item is to recommend to the Board of Finance that we establish a special revenue fund account to receive the funds from the Hartford in connection with agreement to fund the consultants' work. The record will reflect that Mrs. Hevner is leaving the meeting as a result of a conflict. This is to pay for the consultants that we are currently working with. The board authorized the consulting contract. The Hartford has agreed to fund $150,000 of the $180,000 contract. We have been working with Town Attorney as to what the best way to fund, to write the checks to the consultants, and Town Council indicated that it would be best, since the town... town wants to control the consultants, since they're under our direct supervision, that the town should accept the donation from the Hartford, put it into a special revenue fund, and then the town will cut checks and monitor the scope of services for the consultant. So that is the purpose for this being before the board. Any questions? Sean.
I guess the only question we talked about in the first place was what happens if there was any overage or what happens if there's any additional billing. Obviously, the expectation would be that the Hartford would pay for that. Does doing this with the Hartford giving us this amount of money change that in any way?
No. This, we made it very clear that the only funds expended were the Hartford's funds and the town's appropriation funds, so the contract cannot exceed $175,000. So it's incumbent upon town staff to keep the contract under $175,000, or if the Hartford wants to add any additional services, then they would cover those costs. So that's the total amount that we've authorized, and the contract cannot exceed what was authorized.
Will we approve the creation of the special revenue fund?
Second, Pat. Any other questions?
I have Shannon's second.
Oh, I'm sorry, is Nancy's? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next, we can call Mrs. Hevner back in. The next item is to appoint a new member, Dante Valentino, and reappoint the existing members of the Juvenile Review Board. This is in accordance with recommendations from the Social Service Director. They are Police Chief Peter Ringbertson, Officer Scott Sagan, Steve Petrina, Meredith Brockbank, Mickey Lacorisback, Jerry Tonner, John Tebow, Marilyn Rotundo, and we have my Howard Herman. And our thanks to all of the members of the Juvenile Review Board for their generous volunteer time and effort into serving on this commission.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Mora. Seconded by Nancy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is meeting minutes. I ask for a motion to approve the public hearing minutes for August 12.
Move that we approve?
Do we, Sean moved it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mora, second. Any corrections, changes? Going once, going twice? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the regular meeting of August 12. Can I have a motion to approve?
Move approve.
Sean, approve.
Second.
Shannon, second. Any corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Personnel?
No report.
No, but I do have a report. Public safety, any report? No report. Board of Ed, do you have?
I do.
Go ahead. You're up.
I just wanted to report a couple things. The artwork of seniors from Deborah Leonard Senior Center painting class will be featured in an exhibit September 3 through September 30 at the Simsbury Library Program Room during regular library hours. The artists, along with their instructor, Deborah Leonard, will greet visitors at a reception on Monday, September 23 from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Simsbury Library Program Room. Everyone is welcome. For information, contact the Senior Center at 860-658-3273. And I wanted to report that Kathy Marshall, Director of the Senior Center, and I are meeting with Angela Griffin, Director of Performing Arts. At the high school, to once again plan out the senior citizen outreach programs that will be available for the year, I want to thank the public schools for their willingness to work with the town to provide admission and opportunities for our seniors and our students to interact and participate in activities at the school, and for the schools to come to various senior centers. It's been a wonderful partnership, and we're proud to continue it now for, I think it's the fourth year.
Really? Time flies.
Yes.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other reports?
Just quickly, you mentioned September Fest before, and thank you all, all board members, for volunteering your time at different booths and for the Performing Arts Center, selling water and other things. That was fantastic to have everybody out there. Fantastic turnout, again, Friday night, Saturday night were phenomenal. The food vendors, we spoke to all of them. They were thrilled on Friday night with how things had gone and with the attendance, so Saturday was even better. And just all the businesses that came out and to support the event, I thought it was fantastic. So I appreciate all the time and effort the Performing Arts Center Board put in over many months to prepare for that, both the setup during the event and the takedown. The takedown is often when there's not too many folks left helping out, but their effort really makes that happen, and I really appreciate all that they did, so.
Well, as our liaison, we look forward to having the numbers, because I think it must, it's probably a good, a good result, so we'll look forward to that.
Yes, preliminary numbers based on the double-counted cash from Saturday night should, should, should make everybody on this board very happy, so.
Great. And you have...
Just quickly, I just wanted to thank the Aging and Disability Commission for their annual Pick Up in the Park event, which was a, which was a great event, well-attended by members of the board and members of the community and beyond Simsbury, and it was nice to see such a diverse group of people coming together to celebrate all of, all of what is great about Simsbury and our aging and disability population, so kudos to them for that.
Thank you. Any other reports?
I think we probably shouldn't forget, then, the police.
No, right.
For their part as well, which was also another...
Yes, great event.
Nice dancing by Mary. It was...
Thanks to the board for serving. I appreciate it.
Good dance, it was impressive.
Great. I think that concludes our report, so we just need to move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move by Sean, second by Nancy. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Wow. Best. Time for dinner.
I know. This is kind of nuts. Oh, huh? Yes, sir.
The sun may still be up.
They get a good idea that when people make motions...